Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and get started. We have with us tonight Deacon Eric Rucker, International Gospel Outreach Church at 1101 Wendy Hill Road. I'd invite you up now to lead us in the invocation and pledge the flag. Everybody, please rise. Looks like the deacon is not with us. Mr. Welch, will you lead us in the invocation?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Our kindly gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for bringing us here on this beautiful day, Lord, and bring us into the council chambers to take care of the business of this city tonight. We just ask your blessings upon the decisions that we make here tonight. Bless your blessings upon our community development and that brings these topics to us. Watch out over our public works and everybody that protects us here in this city, in your name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God.
Thank you, Mr. Welch. Item two is agenda changes. We don't have any. Item three is the mayoral report. We've got our Smyrna Youth Council here tonight, but before we do that, election early voting started today, and I wanted to invite, first of all, if there's any candidates running for office that want to speak, I'd invite you all up now, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Heather for any information she wants to give the community about early voting. Is there any candidates in the audience tonight? All right, Ms. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that in-person advanced voting is open at the Smyrna Community Center. The hours this week are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., next week, the 24th through the 28th. The hours are again 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00, and October 31st through November 4th, the hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Item A is introduction and presentation of the Smyrna Youth Council program and its 2021 and 22 members. And I understand that this is the fourth week that they've been going through this program. Mr. Gould is our education chair, and I'll turn it over to him to introduce the group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's also, I think, this is the fourth year that we're doing this, which is exciting. Appreciate the time and effort the council puts in to be in part of this program. So Carson, would you want to come on up and bring everybody with you? And we'll have all the council come on up so they can introduce yourselves. And then we'll do, I can introduce ourselves, and Carson can say a few words, and they'll come down and minister the oath. Sophie, why don't you just come in and spread out a little bit? Yeah. That's great.
We're gonna get you a microphone that works.
Yeah, yeah, it's great.
It's an opportunity for all the parents out there to take a picture. Why do I get the feeling after this, there's gonna be a mass exodus from the council chambers? I'm sure y'all are very interested in the rest of our agenda.
I think it's part of the swearing-in process. They have to stay for the whole meeting.
They may have to, but their parents won't.
Right. I'm gonna invite the education committee, Susan Wilkinson and Dr. Louis Wheaton, to come on down also.
All right, both of us. I do affirm that I desire to be a member of the Smyrna Youth Council.
Thanks, y'all, for all the time you've put into this. And thank you, Carson. Appreciate it. This is the part where we say, "You can stay, but you don't have to." So if you want to go, go for it. I just had a couple other things I wanted to mention on the mayoral report. First of all, this is the first meeting we've had since our 150th birthday celebration. I hope everybody had a great time. We closed down Atlanta Road, put a big stage out there. We had bands and events on three different stages from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., followed by the fireworks. And I thought it was great. We had 30,000 to 40,000 people here in Smyrna, one of the biggest things we've ever done here. And I just want to give a shout out to our staff, who executed it from Public Works to Parks and Rec to our public safety personnel. It went off without a hitch, and then the next morning, after 40,000 people were down here, you wouldn't have even known it. And the handmade market was set up by nine o'clock, and they just, it was nothing short of magic what they did. And I know everybody had a good time. We've got a lot of great feedback, and we're looking forward to future birthday celebrations going forward. We had Hispanic Heritage Celebration Event this last Saturday. Lots of vendors and music, and everybody was having a great time there. That was our second annual, and I look forward to many more to come. And then I wanted to mention, too, on Thursday, there was a fundraiser for Officer Mitchell Giorgiana, who we lost recently. And there's a charity called Got You Covered, which is providing blankets for those in need in Cobb and surrounding communities, as well as now they're worldwide. They're providing them around the world. But that was a golf tournament, and there was a lot of folks there. And I'm real happy that it was a great success to honor the memory of Officer Giorgiana. And lastly, while we're talking about 501(c)(3)'s and helping folks, I'm gonna mention Support Smyrna. That's our new 501(c)(3) that was born out of the pandemic, that is now expanding its mission to help veterans and seniors and children and families in the community. And over the last couple of weeks, we've met with the American Legion Post 160 here in Smyrna, as well as social workers and at the Smyrna schools. And we're about ready to meet with the faith leaders to identify the needs in our community. And the needs are great. We've been able to help five veterans and their families. We've been able to help provide uniforms for kids, medicines for kids. And it's really, it's really one of the most rewarding things that I've done in this seat. And I hope this organization grows and exists long after Laura and I are here. So if you want to help, go to supportsmyrna.org. That concludes my mayoral report. We'll go to item four, land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item A, I think we're tabling this indefinitely. It's a public hearing. Allow rezoning from GC to O&amp;I to, GC and O&amp;I to TS Conditional for the development of 107-room hotel and rebranding of 135-room hotel, 3.115 acres. This is landlots 846, 880, and 881. Mogar Farms Funding LLC, 2855 Spring Hill Parkway, and 2685 Spring Road. I need a motion to table this, please.
Motion to table?
Motion by Mr. Pickens. I need a second, please. Second by Dr. Wheaton. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Mr. Pickens, I understand they're very close to working out the details, and we'll be seeing this on an agenda shortly. Item B, Z22-009. This is a public hearing, allowing rezoning from RD to R15. Landlots 553 and 554, .05 acres, 1487 Springwood Drive, DNR Real Estate Solutions Incorporated, and Kyle Vincent. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant has requested a rezoning of 0.05 acre segment from RD to R15 at 1487 Springwood Drive. The 0.05 acres will be assembled with 3710 Ashwood Drive, which is zoned R15. A lot size reduction from 12,500 square feet to 11,336 square feet is required for the remainder of 1487 Springwood Drive. The Planning and Zoning Board voted to approve by a vote of 6-1 at the September 12, 2022, meeting. Community Development recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward Six. And I would imagine Tim Gould is gonna turn it over to Joey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Joey's being moved to the clerk seat to give his presentation because the microphone's not working. Can you do that? Can we bring that one up there somehow? Excuse our technical difficulties tonight. Almost there. You know, we got rid of this screen that we had duct taped up here. Now we gotta do the microphone like we're doing.
It works.
But we got nice new screens. That aren't working. Think we need to have a meeting about this, y'all.
I know, but that's not, those aren't working.
All right, Joey, go ahead.
Good evening. Joey Staub's, Planner Two with Community Development. Subject property is 1487 Springwood Drive. The applicant is requesting to assemble about 2,000 square feet of that property to his property on Ashwood Drive. The subject property is zoned RD, so it will need to be rezoned R15 to be the same as the current property. Future land use change will go from medium-high density to low-density residential. This is the subject area that's being rezoned. So it's currently RD. It'll be rezoned to R15 to be assembled with this property. And then the RD property will be like this. It does require a variance on lot size from 12,500 square feet to 11,336 square feet for the RD property. But that is similar to other properties in the neighborhood. This is the subject property on Ashwood Drive, and this is the subject property on Springwood Drive. Basically, the trees where it's, it's along the cul-de-sac, it can't be used by the current owner. So it's more of a use to the applicant, seeking to make that part of his rear yard. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from RD to R15 and a lot size reduction to 11,336 square feet. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joey. From my understanding of the project, it seems like something makes sense, right? That the area of property we're talking about is full of vegetation, unused, and joining it to the main residence property makes it part of a bigger yard.
That's correct.
Think be able to put a pool in or whatnot, or whatever they want to do. So, okay.
Is the applicant here? I'd like to invite the applicant up to say anything and be sworn in by our city attorney.
Excuse me. Good night, everybody. Thank you for seeing this proposal. First off, as Mr. Gould mentioned, I just want to basically increase the size of my backyard for my kids. I got a two-year-old, four-year-old, and another one on the way at home. So as it is right now, it's kind of an unusable backyard for me. And the property, the area we're trying to add to it is just totally overgrown, bamboo not being used by anybody right now. So the point is to just clear that out, grade it out, make it a flat, level backyard for now. And you mentioned a pool maybe one day down the road, but I don't want to think about it with the toddlers right now. So that's, that's far in the distance. And I don't have really anything else to add if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? I have a statement. You said two and four and one on the way?
Yeah.
It gets easier.
I hope so.
About 18 years, it gets easier. Well, I appreciate what was that, working through the process. I know it was a bunch of different things to accomplish to be able to do what you're, you know, accomplish your goal, so.
Yeah, I also appreciate the help of the planning zoning community. They've been, you know, guiding me along the process. So Mr. Staub and Mr. Martin over there both helped me out through getting through this, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wants to speak for or against this item tonight? Come forward now and be sworn in? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4B, Z22-009, as previously read.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item C, Z22-010. This is a public hearing. Allow rezoning from FC to R10 for the development of two single-family homes, 0.49 acres, landlot 592, 1577 Roswell Street, Brad Thompson. Mr. Bennett, any background, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant has requested a rezoning from FC to R10 for two single-family detached lots at a density of 4.08 units per acre. The future land use designation is IMU, and no future land use change is required for rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Board voted to approve by a vote of 7-0 at the September 12, 2022, meeting. The zoning proposal is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. Therefore, Community Development recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward Three. Turn it over to Councilmember Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna ask Rusty to sort of walk us through.
Good evening. I'm Rusty Martin. I'm the Community Development Director for the City of Smyrna. This case is located at, on 1577 Roswell Street. If y'all remember, probably about eight to 10 months ago, the council approved a rezoning for the property that's immediately to the east of this property, to a similar zoning district. This property is just, just under half an acre. There is one single-family lot, or one single-family home on the property. The applicant is proposing to demolish that home and build two new single-family homes. The existing zoning is future commercial, and they are proposing to rezone to R10 Conditional. The future land use map for the city has this as industrial mixed use. And it'll, it'll stay that way. There is no proposed change to the city's future land use map. This is the proposed site plan for the development. And as you can see, the homes will front onto Roswell Street. They'll have rear-entry garages, and they'll each have individual driveways that access to the rear of the home. This is, this is the property. Split it in half for the two homes. Your front, your zonings for the property, your setbacks for the property are gonna be 25-foot front, 5-foot side, and 25-foot rear. And then you're gonna have your detention facilities in the back of the home to manage storm water for the property. They will be required to replace the sidewalk along the Roswell Street Road frontage. And then there is one variance associated with this, and this will reduce the side setback from seven and a half feet down to five feet. These are the proposed home elevations. This is the subject property. And then you're adjoining adjacent properties to give you context around the area. Community Development is recommending approval of the rezoning from FC to R10 at 4.08 units per acre for two single-family homes with the following conditions. The first are the standard conditions. Condition number one deals with the composition of the homes. Condition number two deals with the utilities being buried underground. Number three deals with the traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer, and those being the responsibility of the developer. I do, I do want to go back to number one. I know the applicant may bring this up when he comes up here, but he's been working with the Williams Park neighborhood to provide some more options for some facade materials. And they are looking at possibly eliminating the last sentence of that, which deals with prohibiting hardy plank siding on the front elevation of the, of the property, of the home. Go back to stipulation number four, no debris buried on, buried on the site. Number five requires them to comply with the tree ordinance. Number six requires all yards to be sodded and landscaped as appropriate. And number seven is a planting schedule for trees on the site. Number eight are the minimum setbacks for the property. Number nine establishes a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. Ten establishes a minimum lot width of 50 feet. And eleven requires a minimum driveway length of 22 feet. Twelve requires the homes to be rear-entry. Thirteen requires the sidewalk. Fourteen limits the building height to 35 feet. And then fifteen deals with the fire access for the property. Sixteen requires the developer to be responsible for water and sewer improvements. And eight, and seventeen deals with the developer being responsible for storm water management improvements. And eighteen and nineteen deal with this, with the zoning being in compliance with the, with the site plan and building elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Could, just to be clear, and I know Mr. Thompson will probably speak to it. Can you speak to specifically what the neighborhood and Mr. Thompson and the city have agreed to?
My understanding is that they would like to eliminate that last sentence that prohibits the use of hardy plank siding on the front elevation. So that, from my understanding, they're trying to get a Craftsman-style house out there. And now, that's a facade material that would typically be allowed during that time period for Craftsman-style homes. So I think they're just trying to allow for some variation in the facade material that's being used between the two houses.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Rusty? I'd like to invite the applicant up, Mr. Thompson. I don't know that we have a microphone tall enough for you.
Okay, great. My name is Brad Thompson with Price McLean Homes, with principal offices at 530 Ridgewater Drive in Marietta, Georgia. The application before you tonight is, like many that I've brought before in the council in the past, with a couple of little, one small twist, and really, the homes, I'll just give you a real quick summary. There'll be about 3,000 square feet in size. The elevation that was shown is a lot of what we've built in the past with the board and batten look. And I did meet with Keith Bentley, had a couple conversations with him prior to that, to try to, basically what we're trying to get to with Williams Park is that they don't want to see us do all, there are two houses just to the, I guess, would be kind of the west or the north on Roswell Street. And he just doesn't want to see, and the neighborhood does not want to see, four board and batten homes. So I've agreed that, I mean, if we want to do some mixing, some siding, and maybe some brick, some brick columns, half columns with other elements of Craftsman. I hate to use the word Craftsman because it's kind of, one person's Craftsman could be a different person's, something else. But I did agree to try to mix up the elements so that there's a little bit more maybe a Craftsman slash cottage-y type feel. But the idea or the goal here is just to make them as individual as possible. And that's, that's the request that Williams Park has made, and I've agreed to try to do that. And to allow siding, as opposed to not having allowed it in the past, would give me the opportunity to try to vary that up a little more. So that's, that's kind of the twist on this one. The homes will probably sell in the low 700s. Of course, who knows? You know, with the market being kind of crazy right now, having cooled quite a bit, I'm not sure. But, you know, we tried to just project as much as we, as much as we can, excuse me. There is one thing I would like to just address, and I don't know that I necessarily need to do this, because I think it's probably up to Community Development. But in the project description, the last line, it said, "The driveway for Lot Two will share a driveway with the adjacent property to the east." What I would love, if I'm not married to that, then that's fine. But maybe I would like to see that say, instead of the driveway for Lot Two will, I'd like to change that word "will" for "may," share a driveway, only because it may be that I prefer to do a private driveway for that house. Shared driveways are real popular with the buying public and never have been. And I've had experience with them in the past, so I'd like to be able to have a little flexibility there. Keith, I don't know, do you have anything you want to add? But that's, pretty much summarizes the project. So at this point, I'll just answer any questions if there are any.
First of all, Rusty, y'all okay with changing that wording?
Yes, sir. I'm fine with the facade issue and as well as the driveway issue as well.
Councilman Lindley, you okay with that?
Yes, sir, and I want to thank you all and thank Mr. Bentley here with Williams Park this evening. We greatly appreciate it when you all get together ahead of, ahead of a council meeting to work out those details. But yeah, those are all satisfactory to me as well.
Any other questions or discussion from council? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wants to speak for or against this item? I'd invite you to come up now and be sworn in by our city attorney. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Lindley.
Thank you. Motion to pass is presented.
That motion do pass. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Hines. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item D, 2022-452. Platt approval. Approval for a two-lot subdivision under the GC zoning requirements, 3.3 acres, landlot 444, 912 Daniel Drive, GFAC Logistics LLC. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. The applicant has requested approval to subdivide property at 912 Daniel Drive into two commercial lots. The subject property is 3.3 acres with one commercial structure. The applicant plans to subdivide the property within the requirements of the GC zoning district, so no rezoning is required. The proposed subdivision will result in two lots with each being 1.66 acres and 1.63 acres in size. The Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval by a vote of 6-0 at the October 10, 2022, meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. This is in Ward Five. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilkinson, who I'm sure will turn it over to Rusty.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to invite Rusty up, Rusty Martin, to tell us about the situation. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a request to subdivide a property into two new properties. Yeah, thi- this is a request to subdivide a property into two, uh, new properties. Um, there is an existing, uh, building on the, the subject property. And it is about a 10,000 square foot, uh, metal building. There is an existing stormwater management facility on that property as well as, um, as well as parking and, and access around the building. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property in half, put the building in the stormwater on one side and have, um, an easement to the stormwater, um, from the undeveloped property, uh, to it. Community Development has reviewed the request. It meets all the setback requirements and zoning requirements for, um, the city of Smyrna and, and we're recommending approval of the request as presented to you guys.
Well, the questions are Rusty.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wilkinson.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve item 4D 2022 dash 452, plat approval, approval for a two lot subdivision under the GC zoning requirements. It's 3.3 acres, landlot 444, 912 Daniel Drive, um, with GFAC Logistics as the applicant.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Lindley. All those in favor, please vote. Let's approve 7-0. Item 5 is privileged licenses. We don't have any tonight. Item 6 is formal business. We have four items. Item A 2022 dash 504, approve site furnishings, shade cell components and custom shade structures for the downtown green space redevelopment project as recommended by Pond and Company and the Downtown Redesign Task Force. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Downtown Redesign Details Task Force met on October 6, 2022 and considered redesign details for the downtown green space redevelopment project. After touring the project area and considering recommendations from Pond and Company, the task force recommends that the mayor and council approve the site furnishings, shade cell components and custom shade structures that Pond recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Councilman Lindley chairs that committee. Councilmember Lindley, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Joe. As, uh, City Administrator Bennett noted, uh, we did a, a site visit, I guess, two weeks ago, it seems like about a month ago, uh, but, uh, we were all very pleased with the progress and, uh, the selection that, uh, the committee has vetted and carefully vetted, I think, is going to make a, a great addition to, uh, the vast new park and green space that, uh, will be delivered, we're told, in the spring. So, uh, we're excited on all fronts. With that, motion do pass.
And I'll say too, the, the, when we walked that site where that fountain used to be, everybody, to a person, was, was struck by how big that site is now, now that it's graded and there's curving on the street. It just is a, it's, it's a, it's going to be a great big new park and it's going to be nice. Uh, okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item B 2022 dash 514, approval of fiscal year 2022 final budget amendment. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. Negative, negative variances on the budget to actual for department expenditures need to be eliminated. An annual audit of the city's financial statements is required at the conclusion of the fiscal year. In order to close out the year and finalize the financial statements, final adjustments to the budget need to be made to account for various transactions that were not originally budgeted. The city does not need to show negative budget variances for expenditure accounts. Some revenue line items were under budgeted, so they will be increased to offset the additional expenditure budget needs to eliminate the negative variances. Staff recommends approval of the FY 2022 final budget amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there any discussion? This is just to close our books. If not, I'll turn it over to our budget chair, Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there, hopefully they'll get word tomorrow. Just want to thank Kristen and, uh, the phenomenal team that we have on staff that manage, uh, the city's finances, uh, to, to the penny. Uh, with that, motion do pass.
Motion do pass. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item C 2022 dash 515, approval of the preferred parking deck one concept design and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. This is just an approval of the, um, parking deck concept number one that was presented.
And just so everybody knows, what, what we had originally proposed was a parking deck between the church and the police station fronting Atlanta Road. And the council has decided they'd rather save that for retail space. And so what we're going to do is move the parking deck to where the surface lot is between the community center and the police station. And this is just the, the concept design for that, that we're approving tonight. Uh, this is in Ward 3, Travis Lindley's district. Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, um, as noted, one of the, uh, the concept, and is it possible to bring it up again? Heather, sorry. I know we've had technical difficulties. We'll blame it on the city attorney this evening.
Our screen's all working now. That's good.
Uh, one of the, the concerns that I had, particularly for the parts of my ward that abut, uh, city property and city community center, was making sure that we were not dumping all of the, uh, folks parked in the parking deck out onto Powder Springs. So thanks to the folks at Croy that have, uh, come up with the rendering, uh, there will be four points of, uh, entrance and exit, uh, two on Atlanta Road, uh, and two on Powder Springs. So with that, uh, I think that meets, and then plus the, the relocation from the original spot. So with that, motion do pass.
Any discussion? We have a motion do pass by Mr. Lindley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hines. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item D 2022 dash 516, authorization to terminate the contract with Integrated Construction Nobility, Inc., and then authorize the city administrator to send notice of termination. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Section 13.03 of the contract between the city and Integrated Construction Nobility, Inc., deals with termination for convenience and provides that the city may terminate the contract with or without cause by sending written, written notice to the contractor. The city elects to exercise this right.
This is in Ward 7, dealing with this splash pad, Dr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just want to make a motion to approve item 6D, uh, 2022 516 as previously read.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Uh, I want to invite now, she didn't know I'm going to do this, but our, um, our youth council mayor to come up and do a couple agenda items. Sophie, you want to come up and sit in my chair and do a couple? I wrote it out for you. It's not going to be hard. Come on up.
Sophie, the real job's not that hard either.
What did you lose your mind and run for mayor for?
Item 7 is commercial building permits, and we have none tonight. Item 8 is the consent agenda. Mr. Bennett, can you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Certainly, Ms. Mayor. Item 8A MIN 2022 dash 72, approval of the September 29th, 2022 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B MIN 2022 dash 73, approval of the October 3rd, 2022 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C MIN 2022 dash 74, approval of the October 3rd, 2022 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item D AGR 2022 dash 31, approval of the 2023 city's wellness program renewal in the amount of $125,000 with corporate health partners and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Item E 2022 dash 505, approval to allow Belmont Hills Elementary School to host a character parade on October 28th, 2022 from 9 o'clock to 9:20 a.m., utilizing a temporary road closure of Glendale Place. Finally, item F 2022 dash 507, authorized temporary closure of Oak Drive at South Cobb Drive for construction of a median island as part of the Oakdale Road Traffic Calming Splot Project on October 24th and October 25th. My apologies. Item G 2022 dash 508, approval for the removal and replacement of the energy recovery unit at City Hall by Max Air Mechanical, 814 Livingston Court, Marietta, Georgia 30067, in the amount of $36,968, which will be paid for out of the Green Energy Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. She did a great job. All right, item 9 is Ward and Committee Reports. Start tonight, Mr. Glenn Pickens.
I'll start on the end. Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I just want to thank staff for, uh, holding a great birthday party last weekend and the Hispanic Heritage Festival this past weekend as well. They were both, uh, great events for our city and it was great to see everybody, uh, attending both events. And also a reminder, our town hall is tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. in City Hall.
Ms. Hines.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor. So I want to also thank the city. I wasn't able to be there. If some of you've seen, I'm a little bit, uh, handicapped right now, uh, but I want to say thank you so very much to the staff for putting on, uh, a wonderful event and definitely thank our public safety because it was a safe event, um, and having that number of people out there, uh, that's a great thing. Hispanic Heritage, uh, Festival, I was able to make it back for that. Stand up long enough to take a picture. Fantastic. Well done. Um, I definitely want to thank the staff and everybody for that. Also, this past, uh, Saturday in Rose Garden was the Fall Festival and it was, uh, um, put on by the neighborhood and that was a great event. Um, and just reminding people that we're going to have our joint, uh, Ward Town Hall tomorrow, which is going to be Wards 1, 2, and 3, and we'll be here in, uh, council chambers from 7 to 8. So, thank you.
Mr. Lindley.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo, uh, my colleagues, but I think the Herculean effort that was executed, uh, in our 150th birthday celebration, uh, deserves a lot of, uh, thanks to our staff. They truly, uh, did, uh, did a magical thing and to have that many, uh, folks, uh, I think that's pretty much, uh, probably about 80% of our citizenry. So that is impressive, uh, and it was a, a fun and historic night. I found myself, uh, looking over the weekend at the great book that, uh, the city, um, put together and it dawned on me that, uh, I might not be here for the 200th anniversary. So, uh, I thought it was like, well, all the more important to, uh, recognize and be thankful for the 150th, but thank you.
The eternal optimist, Councilman Lindley. Mr. Welch.
Pretty sure I'm not going to make the 200th. Uh, I did, I just wanted to make it, as what, what we've already said, uh, staff did a great job. I rode down Atlanta Road about 8:30 that morning and it was amazing how clean it was. Once I got on up north, I saw one cup sitting, I think, off on the trash, sitting over on the shoulder of the road and I thought, this is just amazing. So to everybody that cleaned up, they did a remarkable job. Everybody that did the plumbing, it was just a fantastic event and I, I really enjoyed it. Moving on, this coming Saturday is, the way it's announced on our website, is bulky trash amnesty day from 8 until 1 o'clock at Public Works. Bring out your trash, almost furniture, toys, mattresses, carpet, big stuff around your house, auto parts, no, um, no refrigerators with freon, but, um, come out and bring it out and take it up to, take it up to Public Works and they'll take it off your hands. I'll, I'll be up there. You may see me. With that, I am.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to reiterate, um, everything that everyone over there said tonight. Um, the birth, the 150th birthday celebration was fabulous and lot, uh, tons of people showed up and it was a great event and the, um, city staff did a great job, um, with all the work that they had, did and involved to make that happen. So it was awesome. I also want to, um, thank the, the citizens for coming out for the Hispanic Heritage Festival on Saturday. That was a fun event and everyone that did come, I think they enjoyed it. There was some, uh, really good music there and also some really cool, um, uh, cars, uh, that were brought, what do they call it? Lowriders? And so I want to thank the staff for putting that together and, um, everyone that came out and enjoyed it. It was fun. Thanks.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to, I have a Ward 6 resident in a, uh, neighbor, my, in my neighborhood who, uh, has a website that's experiencing, it's celebrating its 20th anniversary. It's railfanning.org, which tells the story of, of railroads, both past and present. The site, formerly launched in 2002, includes a mix of news and information about the railroad industry, moments in railroad history, and details about communities the railroad has shaped. The site, published and edited by Todd Defoe, has written multiple books about railroads, including the first ever complete histories of several, several lines. He has also hosted the Railroad Review Podcast, which includes interviews, headlines and other in-depth examinations of the railroad history. So it's a, it's a Smyrna resident, has been, uh, publishing that for 20 years and just wanted to acknowledge, acknowledge his hard work. Um, also Ward 6 and Ward 3, uh, Town Hall on, uh, here in the city council chambers on November 16th. And then, uh, this coming Saturday, a really great event at Taylor Bronner. It's called Cues and Brews. It's a fundraiser for Livesafe Resources. And for those who aren't familiar with the organization, uh, Livesafe Resources provides safety and healing to those impacted by domestic violence, sexual assault and elder abuse. So if you have time to come on out, we have some great sponsors, uh, a lot of corporate, uh, uh, corporations, local corporations and businesses are sponsoring the event and come on out and be part of the, part of the, um, the great day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Wheaton.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of echoing what similar, what other my colleagues have said before, but it's really been great to see how the communities come out for multiple events over the last, uh, couple of weekends and coming into this weekend with the Cues and Brews, um, event and a lot of good things going on in the city. So it's just an exciting time and I'm just happy to see so many residents getting out, enjoying themselves in the community and feeling like, um, hopefully feeling like, um, we have something to offer for them here. So with that, I am.
While we've been doing reports, it, it occurred to me, this council doesn't meet again before the end of the month and we have what has been in the past. Our Fall Jonquel Festival is rebranded as Crafts and Drafts and that's on, uh, Saturday, October 29th from 10 to 6, and Sunday, October 30th from noon to 5. Um, a lot of great, um, vendors and music and, um, it should be a lot of fun. And, and when you were speaking, I remember we, uh, had the pleasure of hosting, uh, a Girl Scout troop from Nicahack Elementary. We hosted, um, hosted them here, Dr. Wheaton and I did, and gave them a tour, talked about government and, uh, really enjoyed that, so, um, appreciated them coming by. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't, um, echo the sentiments of, of council of what an outstanding job staff did, um, through all of these events. And I would like to thank our deputy city administrator, Ms. Penny Moshery, has, um, taken lead on most of these events and being sure that, um, things were as they should be. So, um, Ms. Moshery, thank you and thanks to all the staff that made, uh, all these events happen.
Ms. Wilkinson has another announcement she'd like to make.
Um, I believe it's the Arts Council that's doing The Secrets of Smyrna and, um, I just, I did receive a notice from someone, um, that is involved in that, um, that committee. And it's after a successful debut last year, The Secrets of Smyrna returns with another cast of 10 professional actors from Atlanta Metro and a script incorporating Smyrna's sequential, uh, by historian playwright, Dr. James A. Nelson. And the tourgoers follow a .7 mile route around the village green, encountering historical figures from Smyrna's past with some secrets to impart. So I think you can learn, uh, more about this event on the website, smyrnaartscouncil.com and, um, and you can get, uh, your tickets there and, uh, it sounds like a really fun event, so hopefully y'all can come out for that.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkinson. Ms. Heather, Ms. Jill, anything? Okay. Uh, item 10 is show cause hearings. We have none tonight. Item 11 is citizen input. Has anybody signed? Has anybody signed up for citizen input this evening? Anybody in the audience want to say anything tonight? All right, if there's no other business to be brought before this body, we are adjourned at seven fifty. Thank you all.